Hafaday and good morning. This virtual public hearing conducted by the Committee on Economic Development, Agriculture, Power and Energy Utilities and the Arts is called to order. It is 9:00 AM. Notice of this hearing was disseminated to all local media outlets on November 9th, 2021 with the second notice provided on November 15th, 2021. Notice of the hearing was also made known on the Guam Legislature's website. This morning, the committee will hear testimony on Bill Number 191-36COR, an act to amend Section 3402 of Article 4, Chapter 3, Division 1, Title IX, Guam Administrative Rules Relative to Allowing Wild Deer to be Taken and Harbored as Livestock, a bill that I introduced. Upon conclusion of Bill Number 191-36COR, we'll take a five-minute recess before we hear testimony on Bill Number 194-36COR, an act to amend Section 14101 of Chapter 14, Division 4, Title VIII, Guam Administrative Rules and Regulations, and to repeal and reenact Section 14102 of Chapter 14, Division 4, Title VIII, Guam Administrative Rules and Regulations Relative to the Guam Invasive Species Inspection Fee and Its Assessment, a bill I also introduced. Before we proceed with the hearing testimonies, I'd like to provide the panel participants with some general rules of conduct for this virtual public hearing. All participants must abide by the rules of conduct and quality assurance standards, including the chair will invite individuals who have signed up to testify. Individuals testifying shall first be recognized by the chair before speaking and shall state their name, title, and organization for record purposes. Please ensure that you're unmuted and that you are speaking clearly into your microphone. For group settings where more than one individual is present, please state your name before providing comment. From among the panel of senators, each member will be allowed to pose one question to an individual testifying for one round and be provided another round if necessary. Questions and testimony shall be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda. Personal inference as to the character or motive of any senator or any individual testifying is not permitted. Any violations of this rule of conduct will result in removal from the meeting room by the host. Right now, I'd like to welcome my colleagues who have joined us this morning, Senators Tony Ada, Chris Duennius, Joanne Brown, and Telo Titigui. Thank you and good morning, and thank you for joining us. We'll now proceed with discussions on Bill Number 191-36COR, and I will begin with my opening statements on the measure. Bill Number 191-36COR allows wild deer to be taken and harbored as livestock. At the moment, currently Guam's laws allow for wild, excuse me, do not allow wild deer to be removed from the jungle, while at the same time it is legal under Guam law to raise deer fawns as pets. This bill will close this ambiguous gray area and definitively allow hunters and other farmers to harbor wild deer fawns as livestock. This will create a new option to explore in providing food and stimulating our economy. I believe the bill will work well together with the slaughterhouse bill I've also introduced. I imagine a time when locally raised deer meat can be sold in Guam stores or sold to restaurants who'll be able to serve local dishes like kudin benadu or even kelegun benadu. I asked my colleagues to support this measure. Again, I think this just clears up some of the ambiguity in the law. The law currently allows deer to be harbored as pets, which I also think is a problem. I think it's better to change it so that they'll be classified as livestock as opposed to pets. And the law does not allow people to take wild deer from the jungle, but somehow allows people to raise wild deer as pets. So what the bill looks to do is allow people to take wild deer from the jungle and raise them as livestock. So with that, I'd like to hear testimony from those who've joined us today. And I'll call on participants based on how their names appear in the sign-in sheet, beginning with, and before I continue, I'd also like to thank the Director of the Department of Agriculture, Chelsa Munia Brecht. She is actually the one, her and her agency brought this to my attention and asked me to work on this legislation. And actually, basically, this legislation was Director Brecht and her agency's idea. This is something they mentioned to me that was not clear in the law and didn't make any sense. So they came up with something I think is a good solution. And so I'd like to thank Director Brecht, Munia Brecht, and allow her the opportunity to provide testimony on this measure at this time. Please unmute.
Hi, Hafaday, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
To those, Masi, Senator Rajal, and esteemed senators, it's really nice to see all of you. I'm growing fond of the repeat senators who come to all of our public hearings. It's been a joy having you guys. You ask great questions and have always provided support each time we have a public hearing. So thank you for being here today. And thank you for providing us with the opportunity to provide testimony for Bill Number 191-36. Recognizing the vital role agriculture plays in our lives, this bill helps move our community that much closer to supporting this critical industry by expanding the potential for a vibrant livestock economy. Deer, what we also call benadu, have a long history and presence on our island. Once and technically still considered an invasive species, our agency is now working on approaching deer from the perspective of game management. Another aspect, one this legislation directly addresses, is that deer taken from Guam's jungles may be raised as livestock. This is where game management and agriculture industry will overlap. Sustainability, restorative agriculture, and food security are concepts we are using to usher in Guam's agriculture renaissance. All of this is made possible by efforts such as this legislation. This bill helps our agency provide support rather than penalties to those who seek to make deer a mainstay food source for our island. The bill also brings attention and support to the intersecting of our animal control section and our agriculture development services section. Animal control is responsible for inspecting and ensuring livestock are managed and raised in humane, sanitary conditions. There is no doubt that the growth in this industry will highlight the much-needed expanded support necessary to strengthen both sections. The Department of Agriculture fully supports Bill 191-36. It will be an ideal situation for both hunters and livestock ranchers. To those, Masi.
Sorry, now I was on mute. Thank you, Director Munia Brecht, for your testimony this morning. Next on the sign-in sheet is Mr. Chris Rosario. Please make sure to unmute. You may begin.
Good morning, senators. Again, it's nice to see you all today. I would do, I would like to provide support in, in the bill 191. Sorry, I'm still trying to learn these bills. And I just feel that, yeah, considering getting rid of the, all the ambiguities of the, of the current law does, I think with this bill, with this introduction, will fully, will kind of give a much clearer picture for it. So, so yeah, in that sense, I do support the bill.
Thank you, Mr. Rosario. Mr. John Borja, Department of Agriculture, Agriculture Development Division.
Yes, good morning, Senator. Chairman Clint Rangel, thank you again for this opportunity for me to provide a testimony. My name for the record is John C. Borja, and I am in support of the bill Number 191-36. I wrote a one-page testimonial, and I would like to read it. Basically, I was raised and taught the ways of the land in providing for family, relatives, friends, and individuals who were unable to provide for themselves, such as the elderly and those who are physically challenged, obtaining basic needs of food, resources that may be from fishing, hunting, farming, or gathering of fruits and other edible vegetation cultivated or otherwise, to include plant materials for medicinal purposes that can only be obtained in the jungle, coastal marine areas, rivers, and/or in the wild. The struggles in the past may be far and few in providing food resources. For the most part, majority of the animal protein was obtained through raising of cattle, swine, goats, and poultry. Obtaining venison was either hunting for deer in the wild, and oftentimes it was not an easy task altogether. One has to be very skillful and experienced in the take of game, especially the harvesting of deer. It took a lot of effort, time, and consuming, time in trying to consider all costs to provide venison on a table for many traditional dishes and for the use of physical stamina and challenges in pursuit of game. Now, as the years in obtaining deer as a food source, it has become more challenging and quite arduous, and the harvest is far and few in obtaining one. The raising of deer as a livestock would be more focused, resourceful, and a practice that would be more overly guaranteed of food source that is inexpensive and most importantly harvested as needed. Obtaining and raising deer as a livestock for the purpose of food source as an alternative to swine, cattle, goat, will add to the list of commodities that would be a sustainable food item for the island and for the industry itself to grow. Deer as a livestock is very potential for a high-cost commodity in the advent of a slaughterhouse and maybe a commercial high-cost commodity in itself. Therefore, again, I am in full support of this bill, and thank you, Senator Rajal, for having afforded me this opportunity and especially my views. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Borja, for your testimony. I also have a Mr. Pete Turlahey. Mr. Turlahey, are you here to provide testimony? If not, we'll move on to Jathan Munia Barnes.
Hafaday, Senator, thank you for having me. And I see members of this committee, go all CJ the Munia Barnes. I'm here today as a private citizen in full support of this bill relative to allowing wild deer to be taken and harbored as livestock. As a hunter myself, I've encountered orphaned calves while hunting that would otherwise not, wouldn't survive without additional care, but I remain hesitant to capture it, unsure whether it was legal or not. As a hunter, again, and a current livestock producer, my immediate family and I rely on deer meat as a source of food at least a couple of times a week. Easier access to deer meat through livestock production would alleviate some of my grocery expenses and, and meat expenses. I agree that by clarifying this gray area would encourage more hunters and farmers to raise deer as livestock, which would in return bolster Guam's food security and food sovereignty efforts. Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Jathan. Next, we have a Tom, Tom Nadeau, Department of Public Health and Social Services, Environmental Health.
Thank you, Senator. I will be presenting on behalf of our director, Mr. Arthur San Augustine. So thank you very much. Hafaday Chairman and members of the Committee on Economic Development, Agriculture, Power and Energy Utilities and the Arts. I am Tom Nadeau. I am the Chief Environmental Public Health Officer with the Division of Environmental Health of the Department of Public Health and Social Services. On behalf of Arthur U. San Augustine, the Director of Public Health, we thank you for providing us the opportunity to present our testimony on Bill 191-36, an act to amend Section 3402 of Article 4, Chapter 3, Division 1, Title IX, of Guam Administrative Rules Relative to Allowing Wild Deer to be Taken and Harbored as Livestock. The Department of Public Health and Social Services does not take a position of Bill 191-36. We believe our colleagues at the Department of Agriculture can best determine if the intent of the bill is in the, I'm sorry, if the intent of the bill is in the best interest of the island and its people. Instead, we'd like to bring to you and the committee's attention to one of the mandates of our Division of Environmental Health, which will directly affect the implementation of Bill 191-36 if adopted into law. Therefore, we wish to provide recommendations to the proposed bill that will assist to support our department's responsibility protecting the health and safety of the public. Title 10 GCA, Chapter 20, authorizes the Division of Environmental Health to conduct inspections of all public and private premises and enforce the provision of Title 10 GCA, Chapter 35, which I'll identify here as the Act Relative to Livestock and Poultry. The Act sets specific requirements for the confinement and exclusion of animals, sanitation of structures and enclosure of animals, proper storage of food for animals, and disposal of dead animals. If adopted, Bill 121-36 will lead to the identification of deer as livestock and thus regulated by the Division pursuant to the Act. For example, Sections 35101 and 35103 of the Act will prohibit deer from running loose as it must be confined by fencing or be properly secured by tying or staking. In areas and structures, housing the animal must be kept clean and in sanitary condition. I'm certain that everyone here is agreeable to such regular control. However, we do recommend that Section 35102 of the same Act be amended in the event, in the event Bill 191-36 is passed into law. This particular section prohibits livestock from being kept in, quote, "any residential area except those zones as agricultural zones," unquote. We request that deer and other livestock be inserted into the section that lists prohibited animals in residential zone. If our recommendation is accepted and Bill 191-36 is revised to amend this section of the Act, may we further recommend the amendment of Section 35105E of the Act by removing the following sentences from that particular section, which reads, "The collection and disposition of animal carcasses found on public property shall be the responsibility of Department of Public Health and Social Services. In the event of indications or suspicion of disease transmissible to man in any animal carcass, the director shall be notified." This provision exists in the Act as DEH as one, at DEH at one time was responsible for the control and quarantine of animals until the program and its responsibilities were transferred to Department of Agriculture. Our department does not have the personnel or the resources to continue such mandate. Instead, may we recommend that such duty be assigned to Department Agriculture as we learned from Director Munia Brecht of Department Agriculture that their department has actually taken over such responsibility. I believe Department Agriculture will be agreeable to recommendation. In anticipation of Bill 191 to become law, we respectfully ask that the committee consider our recommendations to ensure that DEH has authority to enforce applicable provisions relative to livestock and that it not be burdened with the responsibility of removing dead animals, which may include deceased, deceased deer from public property. Thank you very much, it's Jesus Masi.
Thank you, Mr. Nadeau, for your testimony this morning. Okay, that is everyone who has signed up to testify. I don't believe I see anyone else online right now that looks like they're here to testify. I think we've heard from everyone. So at this point, I will open it up for my colleagues and allow them the opportunity to ask questions, beginning with Senator Ada.
Mr. Chair, before we get started, could I request that, Tom, you provide us the testimony on the chat? We don't have, I don't have a copy of it. I'd like to see it.
Yes, thank you, Senator. I did see your chat. I'm not familiar how to do it, but I'll figure it out while we're having discussion. But I did forward a copy to the chair, chairperson's, Senator Clint Rajal's office email this morning. So Senator, that's also in your email box. So maybe.
We'll upload it to the chat. Thank you.
Thank you.
Senator Ada.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Perhaps the director can answer this question. Yeah, I just have a question on the, the gar. So, you know, currently, the, when a rule is, that is currently qualified and the gar is amended through the enactment of public law as proposed in this bill, does that prevent the agencies from the AAA process from amending the rule again in the future? Because currently, the, the agencies can add, delete, or amend gar via the AAA process, but the agencies can't amend public law.
I don't believe that that bars us from doing that, although I would defer to like maybe Legislative Council or the Attorney General's Office. But what we did at the time was met with all of our, I met with all of our section chiefs, and we went through each section's laws and regulations and identified what were those that needed the most immediate attention in changing. And then we presented them to our Oversight Chair at one time. So I think what happened from that after is that he introduced several pieces of legislation at one time to kind of address all of the issues our agency needed to update.
So they don't, they don't believe that this would affect amending the gar in the future?
Senator Ada, I don't think it will because technically what this bill is doing is amending the gar. So I think the gar is still amendable from other legislation in the future or even through the AAA process. But I will ask that question of our legal counsel to ensure that you get the correct answer. But it's my understanding that we can amend the gar, and that's specifically what this bill is doing. It's amending a section of the gar. And, and then it can still be amended through the, the regular AAA process in the future and could be amended again through, through the legislative process as well in the future. So my understanding is it can be amended either way, but I will double-check to make sure.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to make sure that we're not hampering the agency's ability to amend the gar if this is qualified to public law versus administrative rules.
Yeah, understood, and I, I agree, I have the same concern. I wouldn't want to do that either than hamper any agency's ability to amend their rules and regulations through the AAA process. Thank you, Senator Ada. Anything else you would like to add?
That's it, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Director.
Thank you, Senator Ada.
Thank you, Senator Ada. Senator Duennius.
Jesus Masi, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to the director for being here as well as all the other support staff as well as public health. Chairman, I think this is an excellent idea. Seems as though there is some development that is still required. So I'd like to work with the committee going forward. I think that certainly the regulatory issues discussed, you know, Chairman, I would just recommend that maybe we go from this public hearing to at least one roundtable to assemble everyone because it just seems like, you know, working through the technical process without having to do that on the floor, we'd probably be bringing them in anyways. And I just think that it's a great idea that just needs a little bit more structure under, in my opinion. But I do agree with your opening that, first of all, as a food source, as we look to, you know, trying to become a healthier Guam, you know, we know that benadu is a very lean meat and is very healthy, you know, by and large, depending on what we put in, when we cook it. But other than that, as, as it's in its raw form, it really is a very, you know, healthy protein. So I think it's excellent to develop that. Also, as we look towards the, you know, resumption of tourism, you know, I think that this becomes another unique delicacy for Guam that if it's readily available to the hotels and the restaurants as they develop their diversification of their menu, it brings something unique to Guam again as an experience. You know, for us locals, that's tomorrow's and, and, you know, just the general population of Guam. You know, we, of course, we've, we've cherished this delicacy for generations. But, you know, to be able to now, if, if, under the possibility of larger production, you know, introduce it through a, you know, through a USDA or, you know, through a process that allows it for commercial sale, you know, I think that that's something that's really can become unique to Guam and the experience of our guests. I think the chefs will just have a wonderful time with this really nice protein. So in that regard, Mr. Chairman, I support this idea. I just recommend that we develop it a little bit more through the regulatory process in, in the public domain before we bring it to the floor. That's just my recommendation. Once again, to the team and, you know, especially under your consideration, Tom, to Jesus Masi, you know, for coming forward and giving us some guidance on how to develop this framework. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator Duennius, for your comments. And yes, that's exactly what I'm thinking, you know, another thing for tourists or anyone else. You know, just to add in there, there was a local restaurant in Guam for a while that was selling deer dishes. And what I found out was they were importing the deer meat from Hawaii because we don't have a means of doing it here. And I just thought that's, you know, that's such a, you know, it's a shame in a way because we've got a lot of deer and there's hunters here and there's, you know, people willing to raise deer on their ranch. If they could sell it to these shops, they'd be able to sell local deer meat instead of having to import it from off-island. I'm sorry, Chelsa, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yes, since you mentioned that, I wanted to add that since they started utilizing their mobile slaughterhouses in Hawaii, benadu or deer for them has become the largest livestock industry for them.
Oh, wow. See, that's something I did not know. Thank you for sharing that, Director. Okay, I'd like to move on now to Senator Joanne Brown.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I did want to inquire because I see the change in, in the language here is literally from going from no deer, from not being able to harbor deer in captivity to literally being able to harbor deer with regards to now classifying them as livestock. And so I just want to get a clarification on this big jump because it's obviously polar opposites from what exists now to what's being proposed and what has, what is, what has brought this change about, I think, so we can get greater enlightenment and the public can have a greater understanding because not, obviously, everyone is aware of this. So I think, Mr. Chair, we can allow, get some additional information, elaborate on, on why this significant change is being proposed at this time.
Senator, Senator Brown, thank you for the question. I'm actually kind of giggling to myself because the initial impetus for seeing this needed change was the fact that even as we sat here at the table discussing regulations, and then when I went out with Mr. Borja to do just farm visits to, so that I could introduce myself to a lot of our farmers, and we met those who were raising livestock of different kinds, we see that people are doing it anyway, and it, and it's technically against the law. And I know a few people as well who would bring deer out of the jungle and raise them as pets or eventually as meat for their family. And when I realized that what they were doing was against the law, I saw that the, what the law needed to do was adjust to fit the situations that already exist on island rather than penalizing these people for something that, at this point, I didn't see the, the, what, that, that what they were doing was wrong. We should adjust the law to fit that situation and then saw the potential for a livestock industry based off of the deer that are already there. And then another aspect is that for decades, technically, deer have been, at least by this agency, considered an invasive species. They're not native to the island, and they do cause a substantial amount of damage in our jungles and to farms. That's what was the initiation, or that's what started the depredation permits. It wasn't for pig, it was for deer that were damaging farmers' crops. So that's why in our legis, or in our testimony, we were saying that game management now needs to be tied to this potential livestock industry so that we can manage it better for our natural resources.
And if I may just. Out of curiosity, I just wanted to ask, so what, what, what led to the initial, you know, banning of it? Do we know what, I mean, because for example, we can domesticate and have our carabao, for example, right, to have as pets or?
I don't know, and there's so many weird.
It seems kind of unusual. That's why I'm kind of curious how, you know, specifically to prohibit or even to prohibit it for having it as a pet. I, I mean, I don't have a deer for a pet, but I, I'm just curious as to why that was a prohibition. If, if, you know, if you want to have a goat, you might, you know, people might have it for agricultural purposes, but others may simply have a goat for a pet as well. So I'm just kind of curious as to why specifically was there a restriction on deer?
Well, I'd like to add something. My understanding is the way it's currently written, it's weird. It says, "No Guam deer may be taken from the wild for the purpose of harboring them in captivity as pets." Then it says, "Only those Guam deer currently held in captivity or the progeny of any registered deer may be harbored as pets." So I guess at one point, if you already had deer, I guess you could breed them and keep them as pets technically. And so what we're looking to do is clarify then say, number one, they shouldn't be kept as pets necessarily, they should be kept as livestock. And then that would subject them to other, you know, sort of regulations similar to what Mr. Nadeau brought up about regulations with regards to livestock. So, you know.
But out of curiosity, Senator Clint, I mean, what if I wanted to keep a deer as a pet? What would, what would be the concern or restriction? I mean, if I can have a carabao in my yard, why can't I have a deer? I'm just asking because it's a practical question. You know, why couldn't I have a deer if I wanted to keep a deer for a pet? If I had the property to, to have a pet deer that I was not using for consumption?
That's a, that's a good point. I think.
Not that I'm aware, a lot of people have, you know, had deers at home, but I'm just kind of curious as to why.
But I.
Senator, but I think.
It was like in the past, but I think the logic is usually they don't, for most jurisdictions, they don't recommend harboring. for most jurisdictions, they don't recommend harboring wild uh animals. They're considered wild as pets. Usually they have to get a special permit, you know, just like um in the States, they had this uh thing, uh the Tiger King. I don't know if you saw it on Netflix.
No, no, I've heard it but not seen it. No, you don't need to watch it. Okay, that that's fine.
But there's a whole thing too where they're able to get permits to harbor wild animals so they can have these little zoos and things of that nature. You're supposed to get special permits to have a wild animal. And so I think previously it uh you were allowed to because it says here Guam deer currently held in captivity, the progeny of any registered deer may be harbored as pets at the discretion of the director. So I believe that was allowing the director of agriculture to sort of approve of a deer as a pet. So I mean, that's something we could look at keeping in there and say, if you're gonna harbor it as a pet, you you need to get some kind of permit or something from the director. That's something we could consider.
And Senator, tied to that is that if you're the the qualifications for raising pets versus raising livestock in our Guam statute are different. So if you're gonna raise livestock, you have to keep it within a certain, the pen needs to be a certain size, which is larger than that's than what's required for pets.
Okay, but 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 do I need to get a permit to have a carabao? Do I have to need a permit to have a cow as a pet?
No, you don't.
I grew up with with my grandfather had a had a cow that was really a pet. So I mean, are we required to get permits if we have cows or carabals or?
Not as pets, but it would be subject, which is it's currently now. Um technically, our animal control officers should be going down and inspecting to make to make sure that you're keeping it in conditions that are aligned with keeping livestock, even if you chose to keep that as a pet. Just because those conditions are um more aligned with what the how the animal would live and not so your carabao wouldn't be in a pen or a cage, but rather the large open area. And so the same for deer, because if you kept a deer as a pet, that would require, I guess, the special permit because then the kennel required for pets is much smaller than for livestock.
No, I I appreciate the insight. I'm just out of curiosity, because like I said, we're going from one one extreme to the other, and I just wanted clarification as to why that was the case and even why there would have been a prohibition, I guess, if you had a new deer you wanted to keep, you couldn't if it wasn't progeny from one that was already in cat, you know, in captivity. So just appreciate the clarification. Thank you so much, uh Director Chelsea, and certainly thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Senator Tidaway.
Uh thank you, Mr. Chair. Um my a lot of the questions I had were answered as well. Um I had a concern as well with the uh regarding the triple A process and and prohibited prohibiting. So I look forward to reviewing uh your findings on that um as well. Excuse me. Thank you. Um my concern here, you know, uh well, first, you know, the population in the north and versus the south on how mu- how much deer is in these two locations. Um I was told that uh it's very abundant in the north. Uh in the south, it's not so much. Um by allowing this type of livestock population or allowing the people to do this, my concern is the damage that it may cause to the environment. There was a report that was put out, I believe in uh maybe around 2017 on the management plan for for hoofed animals. And this was done by the uh, I believe it was from the uh, okay, let me pull it up. The Joint Region Marianas Naval Base and discussing the damages, it was called environmentally. If we start doing something like this, Chelsea, uh that would, you know, increase the population of wild uh deer, I mean deer in the wild. Um and thus cause a lot of issues that are happening right now with the environment, the dead, the erosion, the um you know, it's causing uh some of the uh issues with our water, you know, the so what what is your take on if this starts happening, that deer in the wild would start growing and then we're gonna have some issues environmentally?
Well, I I haven't seen that management plan or the um the information revealed. But what we've discerned from our own wildlife section is that there is an increase in the number of farmers seeking depredation permits, both in the south and in the north because the deer are already um causing damage to their farms. But for those who raise them as livestock, um I think there's been one, maybe two farmers, and John can correct me, but I remember talking about at least two farmers who are raising deer as livestock and they keep them corralled, so they're not in the wild. Um and I don't believe that having them raised as livestock would increase our um popula- our wild population substantially. Um and as I said, we're also addressing them from the perspective of game management now, which is why we're having activities like our first Benadu hunt, um which is the first one ever held on the island. Um it's because, and I I kind of disagree with that finding that there's not a lot of deer down south. Um I think Jason can attest to that uh as well as John. Um they have no problems in the time they go out hunting and the amount of time spent versus the time it takes to catch or shoot a deer. Um they're abundant in both areas of the island and we have already with just two days of safety briefings, over sixty hunters ready to come out and participate in the derby. Um so we our island dramatically or drastically needs game management because of the damage already incurred. Um and I think that allowing hu- farmers or ranchers to raise deer as livestock would add to that management capacity for our 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 island.
Okay, yeah, uh maybe I should have made it clear. People tend to want to hunt down south more so and thus the hunters, you know, uh I guess clearing up more deer that are down in in that area versus the north side of the island where they're very abundant, especially on the military base. And it does become difficult to hunt on the military base and it is in our south area. Will Department of uh Department of Agriculture provide any specific uh rules or methods of capturing wild deer or stock and and build up the livestock population? And um will there be any special permits to capture uh wild deer to become livestock eventually?
Um maybe that's something we can uh discuss with um if we do have the um roundtable discussion. But at this time, there is no special procedures um proposed for capturing deer or wild deer um for livestock.
Okay, so it's basically we're in the the incubating stages here right now, just trying to move forward on something like that. I too believe a a roundtable will be very helpful to address some of the concerns. Um and yeah.
Sorry, maybe I actually, it just occurred to me that there are methods discussed currently in G A R for how to trap wild animals because I know that there are those for wild pigs. So um I think there is something in there already.
Okay, um Chelsea, I'll also share with you the documentation I have on that uh the uh the draft management plan with regarding these kind of types of animals from carabao to um pigs, wild pigs and deer, as well as a a letter from the military um discussing the ability to slaughter certain animals on military facilities. So if I guess it's good on the military facility, it's good for Guam. So I'll share that with you so you can uh look that over and prepare for the roundtable.
This is Massey, Senator.
No worries, no worries. Um and uh that's it for now, Mr. Chair. Um I'll wait for the second round.
Okay, thank you, uh Senator Tidaway. And I'd just like to add a little bit uh with regards to capturing the wild deer from the jungles, et cetera. Uh most of any wild deer that's captured from the jungles you see are gonna be the baby deer or the fawn. Uh no one is really capturing uh the full grown deer, and that's because you really can't capture and harbor a wild full grown toru. There's no way you're gonna keep that guy in captivity. He's gonna be too aggressive. Even the females, it's gonna be very difficult to keep a full grown, to even catch a full grown deer. It's possible, but it's difficult to catch a full grown deer. So usually it's when they're encountering orphaned fawns, or orphaned baby deer um that uh to be frank, a lot of times because a a hunter shot uh Bambi's mom, you know, and so so someone finds Bambi and brings Bambi home. So that's typically how it happens, but technically, that's not even allowed under the current G A R. You're not allowed to take any wild deer. So what we're doing is allowing it and just clarifying that because like again, as I was stating, the G A R is kind of contr- not contradictory, but it's kind of troublesome in that you're not allowed to take a wild fawn from the jungle, but you are allowed to have it as a pet if you've already had it since ever since. And if it's if you can say you've been breeding deer and this is the progeny of your of your deer you've been breeding, you know, I guess that's kind of the gray area where people have been harboring deer is I don't think anyone's really checking them to see, you know, uh how did you get this deer, right? So this, the the idea with this is to just clarify this so there's no need to check how did you get the deer? If you have it, as long as you're following all the livestock regulation requirements and keeping the deer in the proper way and managing it properly, then then you'll be fine. So that's basically uh what we're looking to do uh with this bill. So uh with that, I'd like to uh ask any of my uh other colleagues if they have any other questions? Senator Ada, anything else you'd like to add? Senator Duennius? Senator Brown? Senator Tidaway, anything else you'd like to add?
Uh thank you, Mr. Chair. Um I I just sent you the email, Chelsea, so you can look at that. Uh there is one other question I did have. Okay, um no, it was asked earlier. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Tidaway. Is there anything else? Uh anyone else would like to uh add that's here to testify? If not, I can go ahead and just close on this uh measure. Um I want to thank everyone for coming out and providing testimony. Thank you, Mr. Nado. You did raise some uh valid points that I want to delve into further and ensure that we do this properly. And um uh thank you for some of the comments that perhaps we should hold a roundtable or something else to flesh this out further to ensure that um we're doing this uh properly and so this livestock can be managed properly. Um again, the main reason for this bill, this was something that was brought to my attention from uh Director Chelsea Munyabrekt as as something that's currently in the G A R that seems to be in conflict, that people are allowed to have deer as pets, but not allowed to take them from the jungle. Also, they probably should not be held as pets because there's different requirements if it's a pet versus livestock. Um they should be held instead as livestock. And it's something that um uh I think uh uh you know, I think if I can add another reason why pets uh is troublesome is because technically, you know, you can have a pet uh in small residential areas or you can have a pet in an apartment, you know, but you can't, you shouldn't be allowed to have deer in an apartment or a complex or something along those lines in a residential area similar to that. They should be in areas that are designated for livestock, uh because these are big animals and they are wild animals. Um but I do believe that if we do this right, we can definitely develop, you know, even just a small industry, cottage industry, whatever you want to call it, something so that uh locals can start selling local deer meat uh that they're raising here on Guam and uh sell it in the stores and sell it in the restaurants. And just like Senator Duennius was saying, absolutely, I have that vision where we could have tourists come to Guam and they want to try the local deer meat uh here on Guam, um because it's something they heard about from their friends who came to visit Guam. You know, their friends posted it to Instagram or Facebook. Oh, look at this local fresh deer uh soup that we ate on Guam. It's really good. Um that word of mouth spreads, especially via social media. This is something that could definitely entice tourists uh as another added unique feature of visiting the island of Guam. And also for our locals as well, locals who aren't able to hunt anymore. Maybe some of them are namku, you know, a lot of times manamku are the ones asking the younger guys, uh you know, boy, can you save me, find some uh save me one pet, another. But uh but you know, now they might be able to just go to the restaurant and and buy some kudun benadu. I don't know if their nephew didn't catch that weekend or whatever it is. Um so you know, with that, Senator Tidaway, you had something you wanted to add?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm so sorry. I I remember what it was. It's regarding if we're gonna have the roundtable uh to invite the military as well because the military, from what I gather, they they do hunt this deer within them their own selves. You know, it's not local individuals. Uh you hear of armed service men go, you know, they hunt on the military bills uh base and they also cull the deer as well on base, you know, slaughter it on base. And there's nothing prohibiting them from slaughtering deer on the base nor carabao as well. Uh the letter that I sent you, Chelsea, will be in there. So please, let's incorporate and uh the military too as well uh when we have this roundtable and uh get involved with them beforehand to find out how they're able to uh cull the deer uh after hunting.
Yes, thanks, Senator Tidaway. But I've actually been in some uh discussion with Department of Agriculture about uh that. Currently, the military does do culling programs on base. Um they also do allow a limited amount of local hunters uh to hunt on base. Uh basically, the hunter has to fill out a bunch of paperwork, uh get the proper permits. And a lot of times, it's discouraging the local hunters. They feel that the process isn't very accessible for them. I have heard from local hunters that feel that way. Uh so that is something we I would love, definitely love to engage with the military and look to see if they can make the process more accessible for local hunters to be able to get the permits to hunt deer on base. But they definitely do hire a private contractor to do uh most of their culling on base. That's another issue that I personally have issue with, uh because it would be nice if they could hire local hunters or a local company made up of hunters, local hunters to go hunt on base, but instead they, you know, spend this money flying in um uh these guys. And I've even heard uh and I heard this from military personnel, that they even fly in a team of dogs that they use to hunt on base. Uh so they so imagine the military is paying to fly in a private uh contractor, all their personnel, their equipment, including cages, dogs, house all of them here, probably pay, you know, the contractor is gonna pay for their hotel stay and everything else, which I guess is good for the hotels and everything, but um you know, even bringing their dogs in. And I've heard from other hunters that technically Guam law, this was brought to my attention from other hunters. I have not looked into it myself. Uh but some hunters are concerned, local hunters are concerned because technically Guam law doesn't allow you to hunt with dogs. So it's kind of weird that, you know, the I don't even know if the military is aware of that. They're bringing in contractors that are hunting with dogs on base, but our locals can't even technically use their dogs to go uh hunt deer or pig, you know, out in the in the local uh land space. So definitely, this is something I do want to uh uh discuss with the military and see how we can uh improve the relationship between local hunters and the military and see if there's any way that we can allow for local hunters to do most of the culling practices on base. Instead of flying in a whole team from off island, it doesn't make sense to me, especially when our local hunters know the terrain. Uh they've been trained for generations upon generations, passed down from their elders over hundreds of years, to be honest, uh the terrain of the land and specifically how to hunt specifically Guam's deer, which have adapted uh to the terrain after hundreds of years here on Guam. So that's definitely something I would love to incorporate. Um with that, I'd like to thank everyone for their participation today and I'll definitely uh be looking at uh how we can uh further strengthen this bill, improve this bill, and uh hopefully, one day, we can have local deer meat in our shelves at our local stores and in our local restaurants. So thank you, everyone, for your participation. This will uh conclude the hearing on uh Bill one ninety-one dash thirty-six C O R. We will recess for five minutes before we proceed with discussions on Bill number one ninety-four. Thank you. Invasive species threaten our local crops and are a threat to agriculture. Improving collections of invasive species funds will improve our prevention and defense against these pets that threaten our food supply. I ask my colleagues for their support on this measure. And again, I'd like to thank Director Chelsea Munyabrekt for bringing this issue to my attention as well as the Invasive Species Council, Mr. Thomas Hertzlett, who personally visited me to raise this issue with me. And I thank everyone for their input and we've done a lot of work back and forth with gaining input from the various stakeholders involved. And I'd like to thank everyone for their participation and their help with this measure. With that, I'd like to begin with testimony, starting in the order on the sign-in sheet with Director Chelsea Munyabrekt, Department of Agriculture.
To this, Maasay, Senator. Thank you, Senators and committee members. This legislation is vital to serving the initial intent of the original legislation introduced by Senator Chris Duennius. The original expectation and intent of the fee was to collect more than $2 million annually to support the staffing and programs of the Biosecurity Division of the Guam Department of Agriculture. Present annual collections for the fee average $600,000 to $700,000 based off the inspection fee charge of 75 cents per 1,000 pounds. This legislation will also clarify points relative to language in the original legislation that is not aligned with language used in the shipping industry. Containers and other cargo entering the seaports are measured as revenue tons. Revenue tons and metric tons are not equivalent forms of measurement. Calculations of the intended $2 million projection were based on port annual ports which utilize revenue tons. The current process uses metric tons in, in the calculation language. Additionally, there is no consistent and reliable accounting records for metric tons of sea cargo entering Guam. The Port Authority Tariff Office records data as shipments of, as revenue tons and 20-foot equivalents or TEUs. Since implementation, DOAG has floundered at collecting the fee and holding consignees and shipping agents accountable for the accuracy of fee payments. This legislation seeks to amend this language and make the fee in line with language used at the Port Tariff Office. The resulting fee structure has been a collaboration of the Guam Invasive Species Council representatives, primarily from the Biosecurity Division, Port Authority and Chamber of Commerce. The fee of $26 per TEU and $2 per revenue ton for non-containerized cargo, also known as break bulk cargo, projects to bring in more than $2 million annually based off the last four years of port shipping data. The fee as per public law 31-43 was expanded to, or expected to, number one, hire a territorial invasive species coordinator. Number two, establish and provide staffing for a biosecurity division within Department of Agriculture to provide inspection, quarantine and eradication of invasive species contained in any freight brought to Guam. Number three, suppress and eradicate invasive species on Guam. And number four, develop and maintain the Guam Invasive Species Management Plan. Department of Agriculture respectfully asks for further consideration, which we did not include at the time of review, the following points. We would like to adjust language so that billing change, billing is changed to be per voyage as opposed to per month to be in line with the port's billing practices. Amend language to shift responsibility of payment to the vessel company and not transportation company as a vessel carries containers from multiple companies, which would simplify billing for us rather than having us chase down individual transportation companies. Add language that mandates our port of entry to provide cargo data to DOAG for easier tracking and accountability. Their corrected fee structure will increase this agency's ability to implement items number two and three. The number of permanent biosecurity staff with proper technical background dedicated to these items is currently two. Over the past five years, the Biosecurity Division has relied on federal grants to bolster the work unit, but these jobs are transient and have proven to have poor returns on investment due to the lack of longevity and support. Invasive species is a long-term problem that needs stable resources to make a lasting positive impact on Guam. Otherwise, we are just treading water until the next disaster of invasive species comes along. The Department of Agriculture fully supports Bill 194-36.
Thank you, Director Munyabrekt. Next is Dr. Glenn Dula, Department of Agriculture Biosecurity Division. And also I'd like to thank Dr. Dula for all of his help and all of his hard work on and assistance with the crafting of this measure. Dr. Dula.
Manas, it's you, everybody. Thank you, Senator Rigel, and thank you all the other senators for allowing me to speak on this bill. We on Guam are no strangers to the impact of invasive species and plant pests. Unfortunately, we've become textbook examples and really cautionary tales of ecological disasters from these invasive species. Guam is in the unique position as a major transportation hub in the Pacific and it puts us under constant bombardment for invasive species introduction. I believe currently now we are the home of 33, sorry, 33 of the world's top 100 worst invasive species and also I believe five of the most economically damaging invasive species. I believe Dr. Moore can correct me if I'm wrong on that. Notably, CRB was first discovered on Guam in 2017 and now has a firm foothold on the island. The coconut tree or the tree of life to many Pacific islanders is sadly declining on our island rapidly. Little fire ants, which were established on Guam in 2011, are now prevalent in almost every island or not, every village on Guam. And this small nuisance potentially threatens our recovering tourism economy. And more recently, the introduction of the greater banded hornet is now showing negative impacts on the growing honeybee industry. In all three cases, Guam has relied on short-term federal funding to support the emergency response, eradication and long-term management of these invasive species. As my director previously mentioned, this is not ideal primarily because we lose much-needed technical personnel needed to run these long-term programs. So nearly 8,500 or 8,500, sorry, 85,000 containers cycle through the island's seaport. Over 9% of which of our consumables come from off-island. In this unprecedented time of COVID, the value of the growth of Department of Agriculture biosecurity, food security on a distant island as sustainability are ever so more highlighted as necessary to the development of Guam's economic independence. Yeah, so I, I'd like to thank you all for your consideration of the correction of this bill. It will give us the much-needed stable funding to run our biosecurity division properly and fulfill the biosecurity division's mandates. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dula. And now, Mr. Thomas Hertzlett. Please make sure you're unmute.
Okay, now I'm unmuted. All right. Hi, Senator Rigel and all to the other senators. I'm also well worth with public statements. But in any event, I would like to say first, thank you to everybody involved in preparing this bill. And, and that was great cooperation between various departments. And I would like to give some credit to Guam Customs and Quarantine, Department of Agriculture, and naturally to you, to your office, Senator, as well as to the Port Authority of Guam, as well as the Port Users Group, which were all detrimental in getting this bill into the right position to collect monies which will help us to prevent invasive species coming on island. And we need to preserve our islands. And I've been here for 50 years, so I can see what has happened over the 50 years. And I do request and ask all attending senators and their colleagues, if they only listen somewhere, to support this bill. And that is basically also the statement from the Chamber of Commerce. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hertzlett.
If you have any questions, you let me know.
Yes, thank you. Next is Dr. Aubrey Moore, entomologist, University of Guam.
Good day, senators, directors and others. I'm here to support the bill, which will change the way that the fees for the invasive species is assessed. It makes a lot of sense to do it per kit, per container than per tonnage or per weight. There's a second reason for doing this. There is no correlation between risk of invasive species and the weight of the contents of a container. In fact, empty containers are at high risk of bringing in invasive species. In a survey of 3,000 containers done in Australia, 39% of those containers contained a total of 70,000 species of insects, about 70,000 species, 70,000 individuals of insects. So we've got to inspect all containers regardless of how much they weigh or how much the contents weigh. So that's just a second reason for supporting this change. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. Chief Perez, Guam Customs.
Good day, Honorable Senator Clinton Rigel, Senators Ada, Tidaway, Duennius and Brown and everybody else. Good morning. First off, I'd like to give my apologies. Director Agparado got really sick last night. And so he asked that I read his testimony, but his testimony is really in support of Bill 194-36. So if I may, I will read his testimony verbatim. Good day, Honorable Clinton Rigel, Senator, 36 Guam Legislature Committee on Economic Development, Agriculture, Power and Energy Utilities and the Arts. I'm here to provide testimony in support of Bill 194-36. Good day. My name is Ike Pareto. I am the Director for the Customs and Quarantine Agents. Before I begin, I'd like to thank each of you for the opportunity to testify in support of Bill 194-36. Guam Customs and Quarantine Agency is Guam's first line of defense. The mission is to protect our island's people and resources while facilitating legitimate trade, commerce and travel. Customs enforces local and federal law, securing our borders and protecting all ports of entry, ensuring the physical, social and economic security of Guam and the region. Part of its mission is to address and mitigate the invasive species problem at the border. Customs officers at the airport, maritime and postal facility target, detect, intercept and thereby prevent the entry of these potential threats before they have a chance to do any harm. Our officers use specialized X-ray machines to detect organic materials. They utilize agricultural canines specifically trained to snip out meat and plant materials at the international airport and cargo terminal. This is further enhanced by the role that the Department of Agriculture plays.
This is further enhanced by the role that the Department of Agriculture plays in addressing current plant pests already on the island. These threats are worldwide and has become a priority addressed through the establishment of biosecurity protocols. Biosecurity has been rapidly evolving on Guam as in other parts of the world. Guam Department of Agriculture and Guam Customs and Quarantine began providing biosecurity services since in nineteen eighty through a port of entry agriculture inspections and by way of inland programs such as smuggling interdiction, pest surveys, and exotic pest control and eradication projects, which have evolved recently within the Guam Department of Agriculture. Customs biosecurity enhancements is assisting through the use of detector dogs and the United States Department of Agriculture, USDA Animal Plant Health Inspection Service Plant Protection Quarantine Certified Plant Inspection Stations. Customs stance on invasive species is one of a preventative posture. Knowing the negative economic costs for control and eradication efforts, preventive measures, and programs save more in the long run and enable the development techniques that can be employed elsewhere when successfully implemented. Moreover, Customs, together with the Department of Agriculture, play an active and important role in helping to keep harmful foreign species of animals, plants, and microorganisms from entering Guam's ecosystem. With the growing volume of trade, travel, and tourism, new invasive species are continually arriving at our borders. The deliberate or accidental introductions of these species can be devastating to Guam's economy and the environment. Recent incursion of exotic pests into Guam have highlighted the importance of providing a comprehensive biosecurity program and facility to avoid disasters with potentially unrecoverable economic consequences. Guam Customs anticipates an increase in threats caused by the influx of goods and people that will cross Guam ports of entry as our island continues to prosper. Customs works closely with the Department of Agriculture, collaborating to ensure that our island and its people are protected. It is vital that the resources and manpower are increased in order to effectively address the invasive species issue to protect our island. Increasing the invasive species fee is necessary in part because the Department of Agriculture is not recovering the cost of the inland inspection activities, which require additional resources to effectively mitigate and eradicate invasive species such as the rhino beetle and the fire ant, et cetera, et cetera. And finally, the Customs and Quarantine Agency remains fully engaged in the prevention, eradication, and control of invasive species at Guam's borders. And we therefore support our inland partners and Guam Invasive Species Committee co-chair in all efforts that advance our capacity to keep Guam secure from the threat of invasive species. For this reason, the Guam Customs and Quarantine Agency is in full support of Bill 194-36. Thank you for this opportunity to provide this testimony. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Perez. Also, I do have a question for Mr. Hertzlett, if you are still there. Okay, we seem to, I don't think Mr. Hertzlett is there at this time. He may have logged off. So I'll, I will follow up with him on the question that was raised with regards to who exactly his testimony is representative of. So with that, that's everyone that signed up to testify. Is there anyone else here that would like to provide testimony this morning? If not, I will open the floor now for my colleagues. Sorry, Chris Rosario.
Okay. So I just wanted to just kind of give you guys a little bit of insight as to how difficult it can be with the invasive species. So I'm not sure if you see this, this graph right behind me in my background, but that green portion that you are seeing there, the top part, as invasive species kind of take over the island, it gets more and more costly to manage them and to control and the long-term management. It's really expensive. So not only that the invasive species funding is just for prevention, obviously, the prevention is at the lower end of this graph, but now that we have established invasive pests such as rhino beetle, little fire ant, and all, I mean, you can already see how much more expensive it has gotten over the years as invasive species have established on the island. So just to kind of just give you that insight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosario. Okay, let's open up the floor to my colleagues, Senator Tony Ada.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have any questions at this time. I'll yield to my other colleagues.
Thank you, Senator Ada. Senator Titegwe.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, everyone who is here to testify. I mean, I believe this is very admirable, not just admirable, it's very needed, you know, to in every possible way to avoid these invasive species. I mean, we see it every day when we look at every coconut tree that we pass by. You know, that it's now there's another coconut tree gone. So I do understand the importance of it and that the, when the bill was first, well, not this bill, but when this law was introduced, that it actually did not provide the funding source needed to sustain it and to address the issue we have at hand. I think by adding this additional cost is going to, may have a bearing on our community as well. I mean, are we anticipating goods will be going up in price because of this? I mean, technically, this might be a fee, but it's, it's really a tax that's put on every goods that are brought in through the port. I would like to hear from, from the Chamber of Commerce. I would like to hear from those businesses that import. Will this cause products to be going up in price? And that's important to know, you know, if we're going to add this additional fee on top of that. But BB and MAR's fiscal note projections included the, the cost. They, they had it six hundred fifty-one, two hundred ninety, six hundred fifty-one thousand, two hundred ninety-four. But I was wondering, Mr. Chair, if this also included the exempt inspection items? Do you know if that in?
I'm sorry, this is quite a good question.
Sorry, I'm having a bad throat day today. Hold on.
Me too, so don't worry.
I think it's just winter coming, right? We're all catching it. This projected revenue that they estimated in FY twenty, I was just wondering if it included those exempted items from inspection, because there are certain things like sand and things that are exempt. And I was just wondering if that, but BB and MAR is not here. But I'll just pose a question to you, Mr. Chair. Maybe we can find out with regards to that. With the customs and quarantine, are there any other taxes collected at the ports? Are there any additional fees assessed on imported goods at customs and quarantine fees collected from assessments from, through the Guam invasive species inspection fees?
This is for you. The, thank you, Senator. The, the fees that we collect really are just the fees that are collected through air freight, the weight of air freight and the, the weight of the surface freight that come in through the shipping lines and then passenger inspection fees. So this is, this is not in any way related to the fee that is hoping to correct and rectify the, the situation with the under collection with, with the previous, with the law currently.
I see. Does this, by removing, I'm sure you read the, the bill, Chief Perez. You're very good at reading these bills and, you know, getting a grasp on what it's trying to do here. Just removing the term marine commercial shipment in section fourteen one zero one, provide Guam invasive species inspection fee assessment on airline freight?
Yes, I read.
No worries.
One zero one. What I see is that maybe perhaps just do a, collect all the data on, 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 on the information or the data, the intelligence, the information that you have now and on average, how much you would be able to, to collect. I couldn't really answer the question as far as like what other impacts. I would say maybe just conduct some sort of study to see what the actual average would be as far as collections are and compare it to what has been previously collected. But it looks like in the, in the previous iteration of the law, there was insufficient funding being collected for whatever reason.
Right, absolutely. I'm concerned too about airline freight with regards to this. I mean, we're talking about the increase in cargo in, in the bill itself. It talks about per cargo book, but what are we doing? How do you assess that with stuff coming in through the airlines?
Well, you know, even Customs struggles with air freight coming in. One of the things that we find in the collection of fees, the way that our, our service fees have been developed is that we are, it looks like there's an under collection in air freight because of the way the formula is used. And I'm not, I'm not sure if this will have an economic impact. So maybe perhaps, like I said, collect the averages or have an economic impact study done on whether or not there is an impact at the air freight or even on vessels and the surface freight coming in through the shipping lines.
Okay, well, that's, that's a good suggestion. Okay, Mr. Chair, I'll allow my other colleagues to move forward. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Senator Titegwe. Senator Duñez.
This is my, Mr. Chairman. I would like to thank Chief Perez, Dr. Dula, Dr. Moore, Director Chusamunya Branch for their testimony, as well as other testimony that was provided. You know, as the author of the original legislation was mentioned that, you know, the language was inadequate. That, that has been pointed out a number of times. I was not in the legislature, you know, to correct it going forward. So I'm glad that you've brought this forward, Mr. Chairman. I, I thank you for inviting me as the co-sponsor. I did want to listen to the potential effects and read the bill a little bit more because I do understand, you know, some concerns that may have been brought forward. But just to clear things up, as you've basically, you know, added the language that basically lays out the collection in a way that it was designed, this should not be an increase. This should be a full implementation of the law as it was intended. You know, just to go back, because I think this is very important to go over again. The whole, this is not novel legislation as far as other jurisdictions that really, really care about their islands and their borders and their territories and their places where they live. Hawaii, as we know, is one of the forerunners when it comes to making sure that they do everything to protect, you know, their golden egg. Tourism and also biosecurity for their people. You know, as you've done, Mr. Chairman, over a number of years now, recognize that and trying to expand on food security. Invasive species is just not something that has the devastating effect of our tree, taking away our tree of life and the beauty of flora and fauna. It has the capability of eliminating food sources that many of our people, particularly in the islands and on Guam, still do rely on. So what are we willing to do when it comes to protecting that issue? Once again, I want to clarify and I will be happy to be a co-sponsor now as I've read the language deeper and understand, particularly with Mr. Hertzlett coming from the Chamber of Commerce. Hopefully, that's the hat he was wearing, as well as being the Chair of the Invasive Species Council and the Port Users Group, which is really the front line of who I had to convince, Mr. Chairman, during the time, the need for this. In closing, just to let our people know that are, that are listening, one of the more compelling things that I was able to convince my colleagues on the introduction of the original law was an actual shipping company. In fact, some of the shipping companies are the ones that want this clarification because it levels the playing field and it actually implements it properly. That's really the impetus. Some shipping company is like, wait a minute, you know, we're, we're paying our fair share, but this is not being done right. But just to give you an example, because the shipping company was the one who told me this. The shipping company is well-known and they deliver a lot of goods through Hawaii as well. One of the most expensive items that they ever had to have shipped back to its origin was a huge D eight dozer that on its tires and also on its bucket had soil remnants. And Hawaii is so strict on their inspections, and they have the manpower for this, that they didn't unload that D eight. That cost hundreds of thousands of dollars to bring that single piece of equipment back to the West Coast, unload it, have it decontaminated, reload it, and brought out to Hawaii. That's how much they care about this issue and making sure that they do everything within their power to prevent invasive species from coming in and taking over their territory. Chief Perez, I want to thank you because the vision was, you know, agriculture and customs being brothers and sisters in arms at the border. And I think the potentiality here, and maybe, Mr. Perez, this is just one of my questions for you. I know that there's a lot of different discussion on funding sources, possibly for X-ray machine and some advances, but improperly administering this fee in the event that other monies just don't become available and it becomes a financing issue. You see also, you know, at least a portion of this being capable to supply maybe some debt service to make sure that that X-ray machine is, is fully funded and that we can really, really do some excellent inspections when, when we bring our cargo through. Because I think you guys are doing just a bang-up job on this stuff from the airlines. I get notices sometimes from your guys all the time. Look what we found, look what we found. It's the port that I'm really, really concerned about. So can I just get your comment on that? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Duñez. Yes, I appreciate that. You know, obviously, if you, if you take a look at the history of customs and, and through the years, and I'm going to go back to, back in the nineties when we had like two hundred and twenty-some officers all over the place. We were stumbling over each other and we were able to do a lot. And although we graduated a cycle just within the last, I think, thirteen months, and it brought up our numbers to like, let's say, I think it's around a hundred and, hundred and twenty-eight officers. Right now, as it stands today, just in over a year, we are now down to a hundred and thirteen officers. So what am I trying to say? Work smarter, not harder. So if there's any, if there's a potential for us to be able to collect any type of revenue that would help us in, like you say, in assisting us with or the, the governor of Guam in, in procure, procuring of equipment like the X-ray or even helping with services or maintenance, we welcome it. We are an agency that is tasked with, with quite a, a bit of of inspections and through the years, it's, it's difficult with the shortage of personnel. However, if you use technology wisely and with technology, you'd be able to probably help inspect a whole lot more. And with the additional resource with this potential funding as it changes, yes. I, I see that it would be able to help us. The challenge that we have, just like the Department of Agriculture, is that we struggle with funding sources. As we, as you have seen, our collections have gone down. We used to collect quite a bit of funding from passengers and now we're down to maybe, I think, twenty percent of what we normally collect. And therefore, we had to request for supplemental funding and thank you to the legislature and all the senators for being able to help us with, with this. So going back to your, your your question, yes, um if there was some uh potential for funding to to assist us to help with the collaboration in tandem with the Department of Agriculture, we welcome it.
This must be Mr. Chairman once again, and just in closing, I mean, if we we cannot say enough about what the design of this biosecurity division and this legislation was introduced to do. Straight away, it's prevention at the border and then it's rapid response. And that's what we're trying to make sure that they have the capability of doing. Standing up that operation once a a you know, a pest has made it past the border, trying to get rid of it as soon as possible. But then, like Chris said and others here, we are gonna have to constantly battle with eradication and control. And that that is something that 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 is just uh it it's a it's a war and a battle that we never can give up on. Because, you know, it's just, the threat is just so uh you know, in incredible. And uh and so I just wanted to mention that in closing, and the only way to support that three-phase operation, you have to be able to have the manpower and resources. This is must.
Thank you, Senator Duñez, and forgive me, I failed to mention in the beginning. Uh and I would like to thank you personally for being the author of the original bill that created this invasive species uh fee and the and the council and uh and everything, because it's very, very important. And this is a bill that again, uh it wasn't something I came up with at all. I wasn't even aware of the under collection. It was brought to my attention by Director Munya Brecht. People like Dr. Dula, as well as Mr. Thomas Hertzler, uh brought this all to my attention and asked me if I could do something to address uh um uh what they believe um would help address uh some of the under collecting. So with that, thank you, Senator Duñez, for your for your comments. And again, thank you for being the original author uh of the legislation that started this whole invasive species uh council and the fee. Thank you. Senator Joanne Brown.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. At first, I I did want to get clarification with regards to the six hundred thousand dollars. What what period of time was that collected or is that all that has been collected since the original law was put in place? Just to get a better understanding of of um where this amount came from.
Thank you. Dr. Dula, are you able to answer that or or Director Chelsa?
Uh I'm sorry. No, I'm sorry. I uh my my internet connection paused throughout your question, Senator Joanne Brown. Um could you repeat that for me?
No, no problem. I'm just inquiring in the bill here. It it says that it's only accumulated average about six hundred thousand dollars. What what period is that revenue collection? Out of that number come up? Was it annually or is it since the legislation was put in place as a law or where did this figure come from? What does it represent?
So those are the actual collections from uh annual collections over the past, I believe, two or three years um from the shipping agents.
Just six hundred thousand annually?
Yes.
Yes, annually.
In the first year, I think it was around two hundred thousand, but that was the first year.
And when was the first year of implementation? Because I know it's been a number of years since Senator Chris was back. Wasn't not as long as me, but but I know it's been a few years since he was previously in the legislature, so I'm just trying to get a a sense of the timeframe here from when the when the collection started.
I believe it was twenty fifteen, Senator. I could be wrong. I have it here somewhere, but I believe the first fees were collected around in twenty fifteen. And then after the first year, it's collected an average uh between six hundred and seven thousand annually um that gets appropriated to our agency.
And then these funds were obviously, because I was at the port at the time, being collected from the the transportation companies to provide a payment to Department of Agriculture?
Yes, well, from the from people who are shipped, yes.
And then and then has agriculture had a system in place to verify to determine if uh you know, the the shipping companies have properly uh paid these funds to Department of Agriculture? Are you just simply relying on what they send you? Do you have a way of verifying with regards to what is brought in, the volume of what's being brought in? Are they paying concurrently that amount?
We've been diligent about it for the last three years, trying to reconcile the numbers. And what we found um with uh our team, working with both customs and the port, is that it's been really hard to reconcile exact numbers based on how data is collected and the data that's collected, which is what um prompted the request to amend the language in the bill.
Well, I think it'd be helpful to find out because I I mean, I'd be concerned as to whether or not perhaps there are back amounts that might be owed to Department of Agriculture that are not paid, because obviously, we, you know, the port has its own billing system of how how it calculates uh, you know, cargo that's being brought in uh with regards to that. I wanted to ask also, because a big issue of how this this process um kind of concern started was back in the day after nine eleven, and I was in the legislature at the time uh when a decision was made to consolidate nationally a lot of these um border responsibilities. And at that time, plant protection and quarantine that existed under Department of Agriculture was integrated into customs. I believe there was funding that was attached to that. Uh and I wanted to inquire, um does customs still receive uh that funding source that originally was provided to plant protection and quarantine under Department of Agriculture?
Um the that's the fee that goes directly to customs now um from the airport.
Yes, that's, I mean, I'm bringing that up because I think that needs to be brought to light and and greater awareness about that, because under that custom supposedly absorbed the responsibility and and some of the personnel actually that left Department of Agriculture that went to customs. Uh you know, to supposedly continue the responsibility on top of all their other duties of looking for drugs and other illegal material coming into Guam uh to address uh the responsibilities that fell under PPQ. And I think we found over the years, and it may be, you know, can be argued, it's an issue that they didn't have enough personnel. I mean, we were often told over the years that they did joint training so that every customs officer could identify. You know, we would have our little picture and item to identify and and say, well, this is how we verify. You know, this is an invasive species or it's something perhaps we need to call um you know, someone else uh in an entomologist and call them in. And certainly, Dr. Moore, I'm sure is familiar of being called in to identify uh you know, strange things coming into the island to determine if it is an area of concern. But I think we found over the years that that system has not worked well. Whatever the reason, I mean, customs will argue they didn't have enough personnel. They'll argue that they, because I've heard this before, that they've cross-trained all their people to be as aggressive and looking at these issues. Um but we found over time, that's really not happened. So in some strange ways, we're actually replicating the funding. If if customs continues to to maintain the the funding for plant protection quarantine under their oversight, and yet at the same time, we're also gonna charge additional funding that's gonna go into the Department of Agriculture's biosecurity division. I think that's something we actually need to look at. Are we double double charging or are we going to claim now that both customs is going to have the same responsibility? And the biosecurity vision at agriculture is also going to have the same responsibility from two different funding sources that some could argue they're being double charged uh, you know, to perform the same work, because we we've had so many challenges with regards to the continued increase of invasive species into the island. Uh I was up at the University of Guam, and I know Dr. Moore is very familiar, the whole issue with the rhino beetle back in in uh two thousand seven, two thousand eight, two thousand nine, and the concerns that were raised then about if we don't isolate and address this issue, it's gonna spread throughout the island and we're gonna have tremendous impact as a result of it, and hence what has happened. You know, now it's commonplace to see coconut trees that have been, you know, um invaded you know, with rhino beetles, and it's it's island-wide. It's very difficult to control now that we don't have uh we don't have those isolated areas that they were originally. And same thing with the 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 fire ant. I remember Dr. Moore, we're talking how it was isolated up at the tarmac at at the airport. And we could identify specific locations of where the fire ant was found. And and again, the focus was wanting to can we target, isolate it and remove it from being a threat? And now I you see those little red ants and you sometimes get bitten by them. Definitely understand why they're they're called fire ants, because it I I have them in my yard now. And it it's just amazing. Obviously, they've adapted very quickly and have spread throughout the island. The hope was by having this biosecurity uh division and certainly uh with the the direction and leadership that Senator Chris had put forth was hopefully that we could have these funds available to try and minimize as much of the port of entry invasive species from coming in. And if they came into the island, having resources, financial resources, to be able to eradicate them before they spread throughout the island, because that's the main issue and challenge that we had with the rhino beetle. Not being able to have funds immediately available to actually address what needed to be done. By the time the work was even done through the university and agriculture, trying to convince everyone this was a real threat. Uh you know, the rhino beetle was busy chomping away and, you know, they were enjoying the fiesta out there and they just multiplied. And here we have a problem that we worry may be a permanent permanent issue of concern that's affecting our our quality of life and our 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 trees here on the island that just, you know, obviously is a concern. So I I think that issue does need to be addressed on how effectively. I don't argue at all the need to have this level of inspection, because you know, you talked earlier, one of our colleagues talked earlier about you know, this heavy equipment having dirt uh on its tracks. I I followed that at the port, going out there in the yard and seeing dirt tracks going, where's this coming from? Only to lead me to the heavy equipment that was just unloaded off the vessel. It wasn't customs knocking on our door and saying, hey, put that heavy equipment back on the vessel. I mean, we're finding it and saying, what what the heck is this doing here? And why wasn't this this equipment sanitized before it was brought on, you know, put on the vessel and brought into Guam? So we have failed in many ways. While there have been a lot of efforts to address it, and yes, we have the limitations, but some very big, obvious things like, you know, a heavy uh excavator, for example, it's, you know, it's pretty big. You're not gonna miss seeing it. But equipment like that was getting off vessels on Guam, and hence we have the problem that we have. So somebody was sleeping at the wheel that didn't see those type of things, because it's not, you know, a small little fire ant that I need a you know, a microscope to look at. It's something that's right in our face, but the level of engagement, inspection, responsibility, follow-through uh has been an area we've lacked, even though we know the threat is very real. We see the examples of it. Uh I'm hoping that this will strengthen it, but I think we really need to look at the double funding. What are we going to do with the PPQ funding? Are we gonna continue to keep that with customs and then have this additional charge to fund biosecurity? I'm not saying that we didn't have invasive species coming back, you know, in prior to to uh transfer in PPQ to customs. Uh but right now, we've had such a void, a real void. And for those of you that are passionate about this issue, you almost can't understand how this slipped through. Because if this is something you're looking at, you're 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 laser focused on on wanting to make sure that we prevent this from happening, but it it's just gotten so convoluted in this whole process that we've not had the level of inspection and sense of urgency and greater sense of responsibility about if we don't minimize uh invasors from coming in, we're gonna continue to suffer more quality of life issues in our economy as well. And so I I say this because it's just a lot of years of frustration of watching this process and watching these issues fall by the wayside. And then the expectation, well, we need more money, more money, and this is gonna resolve the issue. Uh but we also have to ensure that this division, if this is what we're going to focus all these resources on, is very aggressive. Very aggressive, because I I was at the port for six years, guys. I'm sorry. I didn't see that level. I didn't see that level of commitment or aggressiveness. I have had vessels that have come in with those those spiders and, you know, three inspections and yet still go back in, send our guys back in and still have spiders. And I don't have jurisdiction or authority over that. Customs has jurisdiction authority. And how many calls we get, you know, two o'clock in the morning? Oh, oh, send a picture and we'll look at it. We're not coming down to look at, send us a picture and we'll look at it. We'll get back to you in the morning. I mean, that's the kind of concern that I have, because I mean, if this is something you're you're focused on, you're down there at two o'clock in the morning. You know, inspecting that vessel and saying, hey, we're not carrying this cargo or send it back. Uh because I'm sure once the shippers start realizing that if 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 we're mean business and they know if they're bringing this stuff in, it's gonna cost them time and money, trust me, they're gonna make every effort to make sure every vessel that's put on, every car, truck, container uh is sanitized as much as possible before they put that on a vessel to Guam. But that's not, that's not what has happened. That's not the real reality about what has been going on. So I'm supportive of this legislation. Of course, anything that's going to strengthen our process at our borders of minimizing the continued growth of invasive species coming into Guam, I'm very, very supportive of it. But I think we need to ensure from the top to the bottom that we have that level of aggressive follow-through and not allowing these things to slip by, because they have been slipping by. And a lot of blind eyes have been all over the place uh with regards to this, other than to complain about the problem once it's already happened. So it has my support, but colleagues and Mr. Chair, I think that issue with regards to funding going to uh PPQ funding going to customs and then also having this additional funding going to the biosecurity division. I think we need to decide, do we keep this as is? Is that beneficial to the overall mission? Uh or do do we extract that out of customs and and invest it in a biosecurity division that's actually gonna have the the key primary focus of dealing with invasive species? And is that the most effective means of doing that? But I did want to ask one question of Dr. Moore, uh because I know he's dealt with these issues on a regular basis. What what are your thoughts with regards to this? To having a specialized biosecurity division go in and and specifically be in charge of overseeing these type of inspections?
Well, personally, I'm I'm in favor of having a a unified uh biosecurity agency, whether it's housed with Guam Customs and Quarantine or Department of Agriculture. The problem now is um when the inspectors, who all belong to Customs and Quarantine, find things, they have to refer those organisms over to the plant inspection station. And uh right now, um we don't have any really good pest identifiers. Definitely not in Customs and Quarantine and and I I think Department of Agriculture is struggling um since the retirement of Dr. Russ Campbell, who was
Yeah.
territorial entomologist. But besides that, we we are supposed to have, every plant inspection station is supposed to have uh a botanist to identify plant invasive species, uh plant pathologists to uh identify plant diseases, and of course, an entomologist to identify insects. Um every other USDA plant inspection station in the country has these people on board. And they are USDA AFIS employees. It's not the territory or the state that hires those people. It's the feds, because they're responsible for inspecting uh goods that are coming in from foreign areas. Goods that are coming in from the US, because we are part of the US, that's the territory's responsibility. But USDA AFIS is is, as far as I know, is responsible for inspecting stuff coming in from elsewhere. And uh our plant inspection station is is kind of unique in not having this the regular staffing that you would expect elsewhere. So that that that's a huge problem. Uh so the uh the Customs and Quarantine guys, uh some of them are very, very dedicated at at looking for invasive species. Uh these are mainly the people that used to be PPQ officers that were moved over from agriculture in two thousand and three. And um they they have this added responsibility of looking for for drugs, contraband, money, that kind of stuff. So they have a much broader uh search spectrum. Uh however, they're they're still very interested in preventing invasive species from coming in. Um the problem is they they have to hand that stuff over to uh plant inspection station, and I I I don't know that they get really patted on the back for finding stuff, you know, uh. I think there needs to be a better harmonization here, to tell you the truth.
And I'll just stop. Yeah. Do you think if if we consolidated plant protection back with biosecurity specifically, that that is their main job? Customs gets reverted back to their main job for all the other, I mean, they have a wide array of things that they have responsibilities. I mean, I think we're all concerned about a lot of illegal things, including illegal drugs coming into Guam. Uh and then they do joint inspections, so everyone's got their key eye on what their what their area of specialty and responsibility, because even for me, for customs to have this whole this you know, they're relying on a chart that that will have pictures and a name on it to try to determine. I've been up to their, ever since they even had the old uh facility there up at Tees, where they didn't even have closed walls to operate out of. You know, they were dumped over there to do, you know, the holding up orchids to see if, you know. I mean, it's very hard to do that when you have a large amount of cargo, including air cargo. And guys, I don't have any level of comfort with air cargo. Uh for those of you that think things are all well up up at the airport, uh you know, those big roll-up doors where those boxes are rolled out and open, that that's gonna address or have less concern than the port. I think we need to be just as aggressive up there and that there's opportunity and has been opportunity up at the airport as well for invasive species uh to come in. But do you think that might be more effective to have you know, the key specialties represented and then they simply do joint inspections so that each has their their eye on what their target is and what they're looking at? So do you think that will be a better opportunity so these things don't slip through the process? Because if I'm looking at volumes of stuff all day, after a while, I'm you know, I don't even know what I'm looking at. So what are your thoughts on that?
Are you asking me, Senator Brown?
Yes, yes.
Asking Dr. Moore and then also Senator Brown. I believe uh Dr. Dula has some comments as well as
Sure, no problem. Whoever whoever wants to respond.
If Dr. Moore, she's specific, the senator specifically asked you that question, so I'll let you answer if you have an answer.
Um well, I I I think I already did answer. I I I think in my opinion, it would be better to have um people working very closely together. And whether that means uh you know, moving PPQ people back into the Department of Agriculture or not, that's that's up to you senators to decide that. But I I think that might be more efficient and lead to better biosecurity in the long run. Um, that's my, that's my personal opinion on that.
If I can, Mr. Chair, just real quickly.
Yes.
Um, you know, Senator Brown too, great points. And maybe the, the, the rest of the contributors were discussing. One of the unique features of the bill too was not just about money, it created the council. And this is really where a lot of this discussion on a quarterly basis, if needed, they can meet on a monthly basis whenever there's some um, you know, issues that arise or whatever the like. And, and this is why, and, and maybe the director will chime in here. First thing I did when I uh was elected and determined, came in and sent a letter to the director. She gave me, you know, a basically a breakdown of a lot of COVID issues that really, you know, hampered the council's work. But uh, really uh, the council is supposed to, to really kind of drive this mission and, and whether it's uh, you know, uh, uh, joint inspections, which were always envisioned brothers in arms at, at, at the border. Uh, because we've always known that customs has that key responsibility of definitely there's a line where the border is, but just right behind that line was the design of, of this, you know, to, to basically uh, come together. So I just wanted to, to provide that and maybe that's going to be discussed by other members. But the council is really key and it's very expansive and at least the meetings that I used to attend, it was, it was very comprehensive in terms of the agenda and the discussion. And thanks again, Dr. Moore, for your participation.
Thanks, Senator Duñez. Dr. Dula.
Uh, thank you, Senator Rigel. So I'd like to clarify a couple of points and then maybe give my opinion. So at the USDA plant inspection station, we do have identifiers here. I understand that Dr. Campbell just retired, but we have Chris Rosario, who is growing into that role um currently. And I currently sit as the plant pathology identifier and I serve um as an AFIS employee as well. I'm a federal, I have a federal whatever appointment. And then to speak to the dual charges, uh Guam Customs and Quarantine has jurisdiction over the port. Uh, one of the primary reasons or purposes of the fee is so we can work on programs outside of the, the, the border. Right? So once it makes its way outside and establishes Guam Customs, their fee, the AQI fee, the agricultural quarantine inspection fee is only for operations at the port of entry. Um, you know, that does not address anything that leaves a passenger or a container. And that's where our role fills in. You know, and, and in addition to that, you know, through the council and then through, um, you know, I guess my new tenor tenure here at biosecurity, um, you know, there is a new joint and new aggressive um approach that we take when working together with Guam Customs. You know, one case uh most recently is when, you know, Guam Customs called us in after hours to address some spiders that were found on some military vehicles um at the port or at the seaport. Alright, so otherwise, you know, i- if we didn't have this close relationship, um, you know, usually we, we would say, hey, just call us back tomorrow, send us some pictures. But we rode along, we boarded that ship with Guam Customs to help identify those on the spot and we made the disposition, you know, that very same hour. Otherwise, you know, that ship would have been sitting there doing nothing for another, you know, overnight, maybe another day until those samples came back to us. You know, so I, I, I would argue, you know, that we're not as aggressive. We are trying to at the very least. You know, so we're through the council, through the relationships that we're building, um, I believe, um, you know, what you've seen in the past, and I'm not sure if it's going to be completely a hundred percent changed um from, from then, um, but we're working to improve that, definitely.
Well, I, I'm happy to hear that, but I, I, I don't think we doubt there's a need to really kick this up because we're behind the eight ball on this issue, big time. Um, you know, I, I think we need to ensure also, I mean, I, I would like to think that the ships pull in from eight to five and, you know, we make sure nothing happens at four forty-five PM in the afternoon, but that's not the reality. And this operation needs to be set up that if there's a response 24 hours a day and there's a need to do that, that needs to be the standard because certainly during my time, and we're just talking, you know, three years ago, uh, we were in that situation. Send us a picture and we'll get back to you in the morning and time, time and money and equipment, uh, crew members that are out there for both the vessel and for the port. Uh, there's a whole lot of parts that are supposed to be moving. And when these issues come up, our, our inability in the past to be able to, to identify and then properly respond to it. You know, do we, do we pack everything up, put it back on the vessel? Do we treat it on site? What do we do? I mean, we need to have those things in place because we don't have the luxury, because as we're sitting trying to figure it out, you know, the, these invasive species are, are carrying their, their suitcases off the plane and they're carrying their suitcases off the vessels and, and they are just moving in. And we are, we are failing in that mission because the numbers and the variety, and, and I appreciate Dr. Moore, you reminding me. I mean, it's also the invasive plants. It's not just the invasive insects and spiders and uh, you know, all these other things that we're starting to see that, that are affecting our, our, our ability, even at agricultural level. We've got to keep treating more things because, you know, there's more invasives coming in that are affecting them. And it's, it's a downward spiral is what we continue to see. So I hope, Mr. Chair, I know we're not going to all resolve this today. I will support this bill and any effort that's going to strengthen our ability at the border to minimize. I don't know we're ever going to get a thousand percent to be able to prohibit, but definitely minimize what is a growing problem with regards to invasives on Guam. And I hope, Mr. Chair, if it's possible, if we could get a status update, maybe not necessarily formal hearings like this, but just round tables so that we can get a gauge of how things are progressing, how this is, you know, being implemented. You know, is the funding going where it needs to go? And what are those key priority areas? And even our partnership with the federal government, um, you know, are, are they also meeting their obligation with regards to the work they're doing at AFIS? So, you know, back then we worked with Dallas uh in his work there. Uh, but if there, there's key positions, as Dr. Moore mentioned, if there are key positions that are not being filled or we have a void there, uh, it'll be good to know. And then, you know, we can take the next steps to kick that issue on up high uh and put that pressure on the federal government as well to help protect our interests because, I mean, our interest is there. We need to get this in some sense of order because it has not been for a long time. And I know when Senator Chris originally introduced the original legislation, I mean, how many years ago is that, Senator Chris? Eight, nine, 10 years ago about?
Yeah, it's about, about, yeah, about, about 10 years now.
About 10 years now, and here we are 10 years later. And, you know, there's still the same key concerns are on the table and, and the same fear that we're not, uh, you know, we're not being able to address these issues as effectively, as quickly as we need to. And then if, if, if these things happen, having the money available so that the key people we need to come in and help eradicate it before it spreads is there so that we can be as quickly, as responsive as we can. Uh, we just have to be more aggressive because like I said, they're moving in, they're, they're happy to be on Guam. Uh, but you know, our people, our community and our economy obviously are, are suffering the adverse consequences. Probably now and many years into, we might be stuck with some of them for the rest of our lives and then some. So thank you, Mr. Chair. Sorry to go on for so long, but it's just an issue that I've always had a, a concern about uh and wanting to see us strengthen our ability to be able to respond to it. With that, Mr. Chair, no further comments or questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Brown. I will recognize Director Chelsa in a moment, but first, uh, since we have Mr. Hertzler back online, I did have a question for Mr. Hertzler. If you could unmute. I wanted to ask for the record, uh, your testimony that was provided today. Uh, the question was asked, who uh were you representing that testimony on behalf of?
I am representing Guam Chamber of Commerce.
Okay.
And I have, I mean, I can document it through uh, uh, PUG, uh, the, the Port Users Group, as well as through meetings which I had with the, the chamber boards. So uh, it's, it's all legit. Okay. It's not only for myself, it's I'm very much dedicated to the whole thing to get it, to get it going. Now, I do have a question here, which Senator Brown just uh raised. And uh, my question to her is, have, have you received any quarterly reports according to the uh, uh, law, uh, the public law thirty-one forty-three? Yes, uh, senators are supposed to be provided quarterly reports from uh G I, G I S C.
The Guaman, are you referring to the Guaman invasive species council reports? Those reports will typically be, if it's required by law, to be submitted to legislature.
It's eleven o'clock.
They will be submitted to the speaker's uh office and then they're usually uploaded online um to our website. So I'm not sure the status of those reports myself personally. Um, but that's something I can uh follow up on and make sure that those reports are being received and uh uploaded onto our website for access for all senators to see.
Okay, there's because that's important, um, that you're being in, informed what's going on. And I think right now it's everything possible and with the extra money coming in possibly and hopefully and uh with all your support, we uh, the uh, the biosection can hire than those people which were requested through the, through the law, which needs to be done. I mean, it's, it's now 10 years later, now we're still uh understaffed, so to speak. I don't know why I say we, I'm not a part of uh, an employee of, of uh any Guam agency, anything. It's just, I'm totally interested in it.
Thank you, Mr. Director Chelsa. If I can recognize Director Chelsa first, uh, she has been waiting to uh speak and then Senator Tidaway, I saw you raise your hand, I'll recognize you after. But I'd like to allow Director Chelsa the chance to uh provide comment.
Thank you, Senator Rigel. Um, and excuse me, pardon me, Senator Tidaway. I just wanted to comment actually on a question she had about um air freight at the airport. So this um fee is not applied to any freight or cargo coming from the airport because of FAA regulations that stipulate any fee charged to incoming passengers or um cargo from the airport has to be fees that remain with operations at the airport. Um, and the removal of this specificity about marine cargo is the intent of that was just to give us an avenue. Um, if we are able to design a program whereby we can then charge a fee for cargo being imported through the airport. So sort of to leave the door open without um anything being charged at the airport right now because it would violate FAA regulations. Although the fee is charged at Hawaii, it's because they operate primarily out of the airport and that's um, so it services the airport directly, which is why I think it's allowed through Hawaii. But I think Hawaii is one of the few, if not only places where they do charge that agricultural inspection fee or I guess biosecurity fee. Um, and with regard to um invasive species, uh, Senator Duñez raised, that's more than just even the coconut rhinoceros beetle and um our tree of life, the coconut tree. One of the um invasive species that I've learned about since being in this position that um I find extremely troubling is the Felinus noxious, which attacks our lemy tree. So now it's not only just our coconut tree, but also our lemy and bread, breadfruit trees that are being attacked as well. Um, and I think that was it for now. Senator Joe. Oh, I'm sorry, one more thing. Yes, although um what Dr. Moore raised with the USDA inspectors and facilities that are provided nationwide, but with the exception of Guam, what we're also dealing with now is a lessening of support as well from USDA and it's coming down from the top. Um, and we've written letters, our governor has written letters um in collaboration with other Micronesian leaders to the USDA, but we haven't really received any response back from them about that. So although they provide that service nationwide, they don't here and they're lessening the support and services that they do provide here. So all we do have to depend on is our biosecurity division and customs and quarantine. So we do need to strengthen as much as possible um our collaboration and the support that we give to these two agencies and sections to um address invasive species. And um Director Paredo, as well as with Chief Paris, have been really open um about the relationship that we have and open to a more tightly um designed operation where biosecurity can work with customs at both the port and the airport. And maybe if we do have a more consistent present at the, presence at the airport, then we can start addressing the issue of air cargo.
Okay, thank you, uh, Director Chelsa. Uh, Senator Tidaway, if it's okay, uh, if I can uh recognize Chief Paris, he did have something he wanted to add. Thank you. Chief Paris?
Thank you, Senator. Um, so uh, this is my, my, my take on, on, on the testimony that was given today. And I know that uh, it, it almost seems like we're, we're reverting back to the past and uh, obviously there were some uh, uh, learning moments. So one of the things that I wanted to talk about is that uh, since the start of uh the, the separation where we uh assimilated PPQ into customs, um, even prior to that, our officers were also trained as PPQ collaborators. Now, one of the things that we've done is that uh we have lessons learned. And in order to build capacity, you, you've got to take a look uh introspectively, take a look at your organization and take a look at and do after action reviews of, of things that happened. And yes, I agree with Senator Brown, there were certain uh missteps that may have happened. However, we've grown. The challenge, it, it still lies with capacity building. The law that allowed the fee that, to, to be able to uh be collected and uh that establishes also the Guaman invasive species council also gives authorization to the customs and quarantine agency, as well as the Department of Agriculture to, to build or, or to create uh, uh biosecurity divisions. And we are, we are heading towards that. And so one of the things is that uh in collaboration, not just with, with uh the Department of Agriculture, but also with our stakeholders like the Port Authority of Guam and uh our relationships with uh, with the shipping lines and other stakeholders. It's, it takes a community, it takes a village to, to raise a child. So it's all eyes, all ears. And I'm glad that back then that uh, of course, uh, it, it maybe perhaps uh uh, the, we talk about uh being vigilant. And one of the things is that we've, we're trying to build capacity and we're trying to work, we are working with the Department of Agriculture in, in helping them to build capacity. And I think one of the things that we're losing sight of is that this bill that uh is before us today seeks to correct the mechanism, although well-intended, um, wasn't able to capture the, the, the fee that needs to be collected. And so uh going back to the capability of both Guam Customs and the Department of Agriculture, if both entities were uh being able to uh, uh, build its capacity, build the division, um, I, I believe Dr. Moore mentioned, you know, there are certain uh, uh expertise that is uh missing. And I know that uh, Dr. Dula says that they, they have uh positions that, that are kind of uh in, in uh, in lieu of them and that there are expertise there, but it just also shows that we need to help build uh in these areas. And so if we're able to address the mechanism on the fees uh and, and maybe even perhaps bring in more funding, uh, it would go a long way towards building that capacity. Um, the invasive species council meets periodically and we also uh have met with the Department of Agriculture uh numerous times. And going back to the plant inspection uh facility or uh plant inspection uh, um, station, we, what we've done was we've taken our legacy plant protection and quarantine officers with, with a lot of the knowledge and the skill set. Uh, and we've assigned them to be specifically focused on agricultural related products. They are not assigned over at the airport. They're assigned specifically to attend to the needs of all the referrals that come in, as well as they are also our QRF, our Quick Response Force, to be able to go out and work and uh, uh, addressing these biosecurity concerns. Um, but as we move forward, we're, we're hoping to build capacity. I mean, you can't rely on, on uh things in the past and just dwell on them. I, I think that once you, you, if you find a hiccup, you make a mistake, you take a look at the mistake, you analyze what you can do to, to make it better um and address it. And I believe that correcting the mechanism on the fees is going to go a long way towards uh helping to build the capacity by hiring the additional personnel, hiring the, the expertise, acquiring the, the necessary equipment and supplies and helping both the Department of Agriculture in building its division and building its capacity like uh in building its division and building its capacity like what customs is trying to do at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Perez. Senator Tidaway?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, as I was reviewing the bill itself, I noticed that basically this is a double charge. We're now adding a second charge to these products that are coming onto Guam. You have the, because in the bill itself on 14102, it talks about, of course, the bulk sand and cement bulk freight. And then it goes straight to number two and number three, which by adding an "and" at the end of equivalent unit and a flat rate of $2 for each revenue ton. So we are adding an additional cost to this. I think I heard someone saying that there's no additional cost to this. Obviously, there is because we're going to increase this funding that's desperately needed for invasive species. When Mr. Hertzlett, earlier you provided your testimony and thank you for being able to provide us also in writing on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce, that this additional cost, I mean, you did show them that this will be called an additional cost to any freight coming in and they did understand this when you were explaining?
What do you mean?
Well, yeah, this is gonna, Mr. Hertzlett, hi. This is going to definitely cost additional funding for anybody bringing any products through the port in into Guam.
Not really. Can I turn it off for a second, please, Senator?
Sure, thank you.
Okay, you're saying additional costs? No, the cost was already provided with the 75 cents per thousand pounds in the original bill. Now we want to change only, what we want to change is basically the method of collecting because we had no means to verify the figures which were provided by the carriers. You need second point, you know? And now with the help of the port, Guam Port, we can verify how many containers were handled per voyage and that's it. Therefore, we can apply and say, okay, X number was received by the port, X numbers should be, the same X number should be shown on the payment from the carrier and that's it. So there's no extra, extra cost. It's just only a movement of how to apply it and that's it.
I see. Okay, so as I'm reading this legislation, it says 75 cents shall be computed on each 1,000 pounds of bulk sand, quarried product or cement bulk freight or part thereof. Number two, a flat rate of $26 per each 20-foot equivalent unit and a flat rate of $2 on each revenue ton as defined by the Port Authority of Guam tariff and break bulk and cargo. It looks to me that it is, you're adding two costs.
Senator Tidaway, if I could explain? So the 26 per 20-foot equivalent unit, that's basically, that's a container. The $2 that you read, the $2 on each revenue ton as defined by the Port Authority of Guam tariff of break bulk or cargo that is not in a container. So the $2 is for cargo that's not in a container. The $26 is per 20-foot container unit, basically. And so the $2 is break bulk, that stuff that's not in a container. So it's not two separate things, it's not two double charges, it's two separate forms of charging, two separate forms of items being brought in.
I see. We're talking about that's not in the container. So the $2 is for tonnage, it's not in container, I understand.
Break bulk, it's not non-containerized items.
So my question is, how is it that we are going to be coming, this bill, if passed into law, is going to give us a difference of $619,090? Where is that additional funding coming from?
So if someone...
Game, oh, I'm sorry.
You do your, I'm sorry, Senator. My understanding was, no problem, Mr. Hertzlett. My understanding basically is that, and it was represented earlier by, I forgot who represented in the testimony earlier, but basically, to be frank, there's some people who aren't paying the fee. I don't know how else to put it nicely. Some people aren't paying the proper fees because it's difficult to calculate how the fees should be assessed because of the current rate. So this makes it easier to assess the fees by it's just a straight count of this guy's got 50 containers, so that's $26 per container. You know, break bulk's a little harder, you still gotta weigh it, but there's no real other way. So that's basically what it's looking to do. Please, someone correct me if I'm mistaken, or is that basically what's going on?
That's correct, Senator Rigel. This bill was intended from its inception to yield approximately $2 million annually. And that was based on the calculations that were put forward that there was, certain shippers were having difficulty understanding the calculation. Now, the container was pretty straightforward, but the break bulk and others were not. And there was also other companies that were basically saying, well, you know, we're just not, we're just not clear on the formula. And frankly, to be quite honest, I believe, just weren't paying it. And so that's why I made the representation, which is still true, there is not an additional charge. It is the implementation and the clarification of the original charge that was intended. And this is actually quite a bit lower. We haggled on this, this is quite a bit lower than other jurisdictions. But the intention, and I think Chelsa might elaborate on this again, unfortunately, there sounds like there has to be more dialogue and maybe Dr. Moore will discuss as well. The intention at the time, we had a lot, we had international focus on this bill, Australia, other jurisdictions, that there really is a consensus worldwide to control this issue. And there was supposed to be additional matching resources coming in under federal sources and the like. So we kept it as low impact as possible. But once again, I don't, you know, we can, we can break it down and put it in simpler language if we need to, but the fact is, is that this was the confusion and, you know, Mr. Hertz, you know, as rightly so, you know, harassed me about this over the years. I wasn't in a position to do anything. But, 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 but his, you know, but his presentation is just like today to say, look, just make it fair, do it right, do it as it was intended to do so that we can do what we need to do. It wasn't about the fact that, you know what I mean, expand, make more money, load on other charges. And I think that's why the Port Users Group is acceptable and amenable to this because they want it to be fair and they want it to be applied as intended so that you don't have one shipper that's paying, you know, $400,000 a year and then another couple of shippers that are paying $100,000 and $50,000 and then several others that are just blowing it off and not paying. I don't know how else to say it.
Mr. Hertzlett, please, can you chime in on this?
Yeah, I think Senator Duñez, you mentioned it very well, but really one part of the problem, initial problem of assessing the fee was when the bill was established, the documentation to establish it came from the port, the figures of what cargo was, the cargo movement per se. And it was all presented in revenue tons. Now, revenue tons is a situation which is typical for the maritime business. Revenue ton means the cargo is either being charged on weight or on cubic, whichever yields the highest revenue, that's revenue ton. Now, it was in the bill, the bill came out as 75 cents per 2,000 pounds. So it was basically on weight only. And they missed out on the revenue ton thing. So and they, because, let's put it like that in an easy way. A container loaded with steel would be weight, it's weight-heavy. A container loaded with feathers, it's very, it's very light, so it's a cubic. So that's where the misses of receiving revenue, and that wasn't discovered until sometime. Then he's correct, there's probably, there are some smaller companies and I don't really want to point any fingers, I know many of those things can happen, they might not have paid their due share because in the law, it's per month to send it to Department of Agriculture. And that was the original movement. Now we want to change things. Do we take your, to help you out a little, Senator Tidaway? It's to verify the payment from various carriers and there are only about seven or eight carriers involved and that's the nice thing about it. It was not very, it's not very easy on the weight basis because the port uses weight in a different fashion than customs use it. The port uses the, has the cargo plus the container plus the package as a weight, so it's actually higher. Whereas the carrier and customs use only the actual contents, whatever is being shipped. So this is a lower, lower situation. And to verify that is difficult. So with the containers, it's so much easier and it's, and with the cooperation with the port, no problem. And I think we can all rest in peace on that. Thank you.
And Mr. Hertzlett, are you sitting on the board of the Guam Invasive Species Council?
Well, I'm so-called, what you call it, associate member?
Okay.
I've asked, and the movement to get the chamber involved and it was improved and to put the chamber also as a voting member for the board.
Okay, well, thank you so much and thank you for that explanation. You know, it's not just myself, those who are listening and are trying to figure this out of its additional cost. I mean, we all know that the intention was to yield $2 million, but even after this assessment and based on the physical note, it's only going to yield 1.27 million with regard to this. And it's obvious that there, the funding that needs to be identified, you know, to accurately and be able to and justifiably provide the manpower needed to ensure that, you know, our borders are protected from these invasive species. I don't know if this is going to even be enough, you know? So I'm looking forward to any other suggestions and I would like to read some of the fact you brought up, whether the meetings were given based on 31-43 to the legislature on a quarterly basis. I look forward to reading some of those minutes of the meeting to find out exactly what else you've been talking about to improve this area. So again...
Let me give you a quick idea. What I'm working on right now is I'm trying to work with the congressman on changing the situation with the air cargo, that we can charge fees at the air cargo as well. And therefore, because there's manpower involved and that is not being recorded, I mean, not recorded in that sense that the officers get paid accordingly.
Well, I actually sent a message to Chief Perez to send me some kind of graphics on the process on inspections. And when he was coming up, I thought he was going to mention airports' ability to charge fees. Chelsa mentioned something earlier that they can't do it, but yet there are some fees that are being charged at the airport. Maybe it's used taxes, basically, used taxes, but that is something we can look into as well. I'll be talking with Chief Perez later on. So thank you, Mr. Hertzlett, for coming back at the meeting and answering some of our questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Tidaway. Are there any other comments anyone would like to make? Any other questions or comments from any of my colleagues?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to mention that also an added benefit if, as the meetings continue, during the time that I was attending the meetings when the law was first enacted, you know, we had military partners there, we had everybody involved in any types of, you know, handling of cargo outside of the port and outside of our airport. And I think that that's another vital aspect, you know, maybe that's something we need to continue to explore. But I know that, like was discussed earlier, particularly the roll-on-roll-off and some of the other, you know, introductions with equipment and even activity at wharfs not controlled by the port. And so this is really a key issue as well, you know? It's not just always about the money, it's about the coordination and the discussions that make, you know, that our partners on Guam too, that do a lot of, you know, transshipment and other things. You know, one of the, in closing, one of the discussions about early detections of CRB in Hawaii was possibly air force activity between the aircraft going back between Hawaii and Guam. And they load a lot of that stuff at night, you know, when the lights are really bright and everything else and they don't see everything that's flying and flying around. And so that's why the coordination is really so important. So there's a lot more than just this, but, you know, resources, at the end of the day, we've got to just be clear about it. Resources are, this is a resource intense operation to be able to fight this issue. So, but coordination is also very important and I was always thankful that our, that Coast Guard, Air Force, Navy, they attended regularly to make sure that they were aware of their responsibilities as well as maybe advocating for additional funding for us. Just watching, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Duñez. Anyone else, any comments or questions? If not, we will go ahead and wrap up this hearing. I'll make some final comments. Just again, thank you everyone for attending and for all of your testimony. Thank you for everyone who's worked with my office on this bill, Director Chelsa, Munia Brecht, Dr. Dula and Mr. Thomas Hertzlett. Thank you all very much for all of your work on this. Dr. Moore, thank you as well. Chris Vazario, thank you. And to all my colleagues, thanks for attending and thanks for the questions and the dialogue. There's some very important dialogue that was brought up today. This is a very important issue. Invasive species is like looking for a needle in a haystack. If you think about it, sometimes you're looking for a tiny bug in a huge container filled with all kinds of other items. And just that one bug, if it gets through and lays eggs, sometimes can lead to the introduction of an invasive species. And we've all, now, the good news to me is at least I think the public is a lot more educated on invasive species. Several, certainly 10 years ago, when Senator Duñez took this up, it was starting to be talked about, but not nearly as much as it is now because when Senator Duñez was doing it, we didn't see as much of the destruction as we do now. Now, you talk to anyone on Guam, everyone knows what the coconut rhinoceros beetle is and what it does because everyone's had it affect their trees on their property just about. It's hard to find anyone who can say that they've never seen any of their trees, if they have coconut trees on their property, damaged. And it's hard to find anyone that hasn't seen trees damaged by the rhino beetle. And that's just one example, but I think that's been a huge example that has really educated the public about the importance of defending against invasive species. So I think it's time, we definitely do everything we can to update and improve whatever policies we have in place with regards to the prevention of the importation of invasive species. And I'd like to ask everyone to all work together, let's work together and solve this problem and prevent invasive species from ruining our island and the few precious natural resources that we have. So thank you everyone for your testimony and your help today. The committee will continue to accept written statements on today's hearing within 10 business days from today, which may be mailed to my office at 238 Archbishop Flores Street, Suite 906 of the DNA Building in Hagatna. You may also send your statements to us at clintridgell@guamlegislature.org, I'll spell that, C-L-Y-N-T-R-I-D-G-E-L-L at guamlegislature.org, or you can send it by fax to 475-4768. Thank you all for your participation. This virtual public hearing is adjourned, it is 11:30 a.m. Thank you.